... to order on this August 2 of 2021. Thank you for everyone for attending this evening. We're going to have a busy agenda. If you would please rise for the invocation. I wish to use as our invocation, an excerpt from the special object of praying for God's blessing, to rest on the first President George Washington and the new government published Thursday, April 23 of 1789. And I quote, "As we believe in the overruling providence and feel our constant dependence upon God for every blessing, so it is undoubtedly our duty to acknowledge Him in all our ways and commit our concern to His protection and mercy. Amen." Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I have the agenda items. Additional items I wish to add to the agenda. We're going to add a closed session for three items, one of them being to confer with our attorney, attorney-client privilege. Then the other one is the local expansion of a business, and the other subject will be regarding the opioid litigation. That will be in the closed session. I would like to move item seven, or excuse me, 6B to after the closed session, and 6B is under new business, the approval of resolution and MOA with the North Carolina Attorney General's Office in reference to the opioid litigation settlement. So we're going to bring that out after closed session. Do I have any other additions to the agenda? Do I hear a motion to approve the...
So moved with the changes to the agenda.
Okay. Motion has been made to approve the changes to the agenda, additional agenda items. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Thank you for the changes. I have the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion approved.
Motion has been made to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Motion has been made to approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Just so that you know, the, my vice chairman, she is on vacation, and she may be monitoring. Is she on the phone? Okay. Enough said. Next item on the agenda is our attorney wishes to make a brief statement.
Sure. Just before the, before we begin the public hearing, can you all hear me?
Is the microphone on?
Okay. That's better. So before we begin the public hearing, I again would like to thank the EMS Advisory Committee for their hard work. Every member on the committee understood the importance of the work, reviewed each application fairly, knowing the responsibility they had, in making a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. At the time the committee was appointed, each committee member made a commitment to set aside any possible biases and evaluate the applications and information provided by the applicants in an impartial and ethical manner, with the purpose to impart a recommendation that they believed to be in the best interest of the county residents. The committee met in public meetings numerous times to discuss the applications. All committee members took an active role in devoting time and effort into reviewing the information provided, asking questions and seeking guidance when needed to assist in making recommendations. Special counsel with significant experience in the area of EMS was also retained by the county to provide additional assistance throughout the process. The committee voted three to two to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to move forward with the required public hearings and recommended First Health of Carolina's application. Reasons include the fleet of ambulances and staff to ensure appropriate coverage in the county, an established paramedic academy to which it hires, trains, and graduates employees through the academy. An additional reason was First Health of the Carolinas provides EMS services in three counties, Chatham, Richmond, and Montgomery. The first responder program can help get services to citizens more efficiently by utilizing the various fire departments within the county. Tonight, the board will hear from the public. The chair will preside over the public hearing. And for everyone to remember that there will be a second public hearing in our meeting in August, which will be held at the Civic Center. There will be no decisions made this evening, and the board will take a vote following the second public hearing in August. So I just wanted to reiterate where we have been to where we are tonight.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Just a reminder, if you do have your cellphones, please mute them, and if it goes off, we'll stop and let you answer the phone, okay? Thank you. I knew, I do now wish to open the public hearing on the need for emergency medical services in Lee County and the need for a franchise to cover those services. The public hearing is now open. I would like to have those in favor of the franchise agreement to come forward, and please state your name and your address clearly for the record. Anyone for the franchise as being recommended?
Do you have a list for the public hearing of speakers next to you? You may want to call them.
I do have a list.
Yes, sir.
I know. I was, you want me to call them?
You may want to call them.
All right. We'll go down the list here. Please identify you're either for or against the franchise. First individual on the list is Mr. Tom Snell. How are you, sir?
Good. Thanks for having me. Good evening. My name is Tom Snell. I live at 1201 Wilkins Drive in Sanford, and I am currently the chairman of the board for the Central Carolina Hospital. I would like to note that I serve without compensation and have no pecuniary interest in this issue other than as a citizen of Lee County. I have previously served as chairman of the board for the Sanford Chamber of Commerce, and I currently serve as chairman of Lee County Arts and Community Center that y'all have, as a board, have helped us tremendously. I want to say thank you for that. We support nonprofits and arts in Lee County. And I just say those things basically to say that I do want to give my time and efforts to making our community a great place to live and work. I wanted to speak tonight because I understood that the commissioners are considering a change in our EMS vendor from our local hospital to another county's hospital's ownership. I believe that would be a mistake, and I am speaking out to ask the county to award the contract to our local hospital. I have been a part of numerous conversations about improving and expanding our hospital facility and services in Lee County as we see the county grow, and it is growing. We have seen our call volume more than double since we began managing the EMS here. Hospital-owned EMS starts the process for any hospital services where the patient is delivered, expediting their care and their continuity. Our hospital also trains nurses coming out of CCCC, our community college. Any reduction in patient flow at our hospital also reduces the chance of their training. And not all EMS services are life and death, get the patient to the closest emergency room. So I asked myself the question, why would another hospital in another county want to take over our EMS services? Is it because they have some altruistic belief that they can do it better? Or is it the opportunity to direct patient flow to outside of our community? I believe we're fortunate to have a hospital in Lee County, a benefit that many counties do not have. And I think that we should do everything we can to strengthen our local hospital and look for ways to collaborate on improving and growing their services. And I hope that you will award the contract to Central Carolina Hospital. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next individual on the list is Rajiv Swamy. And if I could remind you, please, please address the microphone and let us know your address as well.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Rajiv Swamy. My address is 4100 Cricket Lane, Durham, North Carolina, 27707. I am an interventional cardiologist that works primarily at Central Carolina Hospital. I'm also the chairman of the Medical Department at Central Carolina Hospital. I had the opportunity to work at Central Carolina Hospital and have been here for approximately two and a half years. I thought this would be a great professional opportunity, but really, it's become more than that. It's, you know, the blue shirts behind me and the men and women you see have made Central Carolina Hospital, Sanford, and Lee County a home for me. We take care of some of the sickest patients in this hospital, and I believe that oftentimes the work that's being done at Central Carolina Hospital is not totally recognized by the community members and maybe some of the board members and people at this conference today. The EMS team does exceptional work, and having a hospital and an EMS team locally in the community offers a great service to our community. Now, in the changing healthcare landscape that we see, not just in North Carolina, but the United States, along with the recent pandemic, which is ongoing, that we're struggling with on a day-in, day-out basis, both personally and professionally, it's even more incumbent in my mind that Central Carolina Hospital is able to maintain, through Central Carolina Hospital EMS services, these critical services for our community members. I was not completely aware of all of these meetings and discussions prior to becoming more involved in the community and in the hospital, but I would like to serve to make my point through this meeting, taking care of patients with many of the people behind me on a day-in, day-out basis, that losing the contract for EMS to another county would be, in my mind, potentially devastating to the community residents. And I strongly would like to advocate that the contract stays with Central Carolina Hospital. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next individual on the list is Monica Lights.
Hello. My name is Monica Lights. I live at 19 Long Drive, Sanford, North Carolina. I was personally present for the hearing when both First Health and Central Carolina presented their proposals, and I'd like to share some of the reasons I think the commissioners should question the recommendation. First, I understand that First Health has paid quarterly penalties numerous times, leaving units unstaffed in Chatham County. The inability to cover that contractual obligation is concerning. After their strong infrastructure was one of the primary reasons the members of the committee voted for First Health. During the presentations, it was evident that CCH EMS vacancy rates are much lower than First Health. Over half of our CCH EMS crew has worked at the hospital at least five to 10 years. Many have worked as long as 15 to 20. This is proof that CCH can attract and retain the staff needed to continue to provide the high-level service they have for 24 years. CCH also employs former First Health EMS personnel, and many have stated they will leave if there is a transition to First Health. I believe it's presumptuous on First Health's behalf to think that they'll automatically assume our current employees. What should even be more alarming to the commissioners is contract negotiations in Montgomery County right now. Montgomery commissioners have expressed concern with the First Health's proposed cost increases outpacing the county's revenue. On July 30, First Health COO Brian Canfield stated to the Montgomery Herald that they are facing personnel shortages, all while the First Health CEO on record locally states that they have staffing for our area. Which is it? Proposed increased costs for services while leaving Montgomery County short-staffed? History of paid penalties to Chatham County for inability to staff units? I don't think that's the change we want for Lee County. Thank you for taking time to hear my concerns. I hope you all have a chance to carefully review both proposals and see the advantages of keeping our EMS local.
Thank you. Betsy Junkin, is that correct? Junkin, okay. I'm sorry.
Hi, y'all. My name is Betsy Junkin, and I work at the hospital, Central Carolina Hospital, and the case management director. Central Carolina EMS is a designated teaching institute. Both the hospital and our EMS department have a collaborative relationship with Central Carolina Community College. The paramedic academy that First Health boasted about in their presentation to the EMS Advisory Committee has been running for almost four years, but has not yet solved their staffing problems, as evidenced by the information about both Chatham and Montgomery County. I would hope that the commissioners would advocate for an EMS service that serves the students of Lee County. Central Carolina Hospital employees, to include our incredible EMS department, could all drive 45 minutes north, south, east, and west to work elsewhere, but we don't. We choose to care for our neighbors' grandmothers, our best friends' sisters, our own family members in our town, in our hospital. We put Lee County first. We shop in our town's small businesses. We serve on the boards of our local nonprofit organizations. We give our energy, our time, and our focus to this community. It's been disappointing to discover that a handful of people are willing to lead the charge to ask that our county disregard its own community hospital. We have been here for over 24 years, serving, caring, and providing EMS services to our community. It's heartbreaking to know that our commissioners are even willing to consider turning their backs on us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Betsy. Next individual, Bonnie Davis.
Good evening. My name is Bonnie Davis. I reside at 4077 Center Church Road. I'm here to speak in favor of keeping our current EMS with Central Carolina Hospital. I can't imagine our hospital serving the public with an EMS from another county, and the feelings of these employees losing their jobs due to the county accepting an outside franchise when there have been no current problems with the existing EMS. I am asking if there are any documented meetings with the hospital discussing any dissatisfaction with the current EMS. If not, why are we looking for another provider? The present EMS employees are dedicated, and they are familiar with the residents of Lee County. I've had several occasions I've had to use them, and I couldn't ask for any better service than what they gave. The core values listed under the mission of Lee County on your website reads, "We value our citizens, community, and family. We value our business and industry. We value our competent, knowledgeable, and courteous employees. We value our cost-effective, high-quality service. We value our responsive and cooperative departments." Which, the current EMS meets all of these values, and they go above and beyond the service. Lee County will lose revenue with the patients they take to Moore County, along with vehicle taxes, and the hospital donates millions in charity care each year. Also, local businesses will lose revenue from day one if First Health has granted the franchise. A local example would be local garages, including dealerships who provide repairs and maintenance of the vehicles. I am thankful to have a local hospital here in Sanford, and I want to keep it here. I appreciate what this hospital brings to our community, and with that, I urge you to consider leaving the franchise with Central Carolina Hospital. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. A question for the manager.
I know we've been with Central Carolina for 24 years. Did we go seeking, you know, another provider, or is it just time for us to be looking at that?
The franchise is up, and there is competition involved, so according to our ordinance, we have to let the competition play out.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of the manager? All right. Next person on the agenda, or on the list here, is Millie Johnson.
Good evening, Chairman Smith and Commissioners. My name is Millie Johnson, and I live at 4017 Henley Road. I'm speaking in support of keeping the current EMS, which has been with our local hospital for the past 24 years. I'm a firm believer, if it's not broke, don't fix it. From personal experience, I do not see anything that needs fixing with our current EMS. I've had to call them to my home, and the staff was very professional, courteous, and especially efficient. It makes no sense to replace the current Lee County Emergency Management Service with a surrounding county EMS, which I understand is to be First Health. If another county takes over EMS, would this not cause a loss of jobs and loss of sales tax for Lee County? And potentially, a loss of a local hospital? I respectfully ask you to consider awarding the contract to our current existing EMS. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person on the list is Brian Canfield.
Good evening to the Board of Commissioners. My name is Brian Canfield. I live at 163 National Drive, Pinehurst, North Carolina. I'm currently the chief operating officer of Moore Regional Hospital, and I'm speaking on behalf of First Health of the Carolinas. Firstly, we want to say thank you to the EMS Advisory Committee for the opportunity to present our First Health EMS proposal over the past couple of months. We appreciate the vote of confidence that we received from them. And secondly, First Health stands ready to serve the residents of Lee County with the same level of high-quality EMS services that we currently do in three neighboring counties that you heard from previously. We'll be happy to answer any questions that the board may have when the time is appropriate. And thank you again to the Lee County Board of Commissioners and the EMS Advisory Committee.
Thank you, sir. And the last person on the list is Ray Graves. Did I pronounce that correctly?
You did.
Okay.
Ray Graves, 335 Savannah Garden Drive, Carthage. I didn't come prepared because I signed my name on the paper by accident, but that's okay. I have been employed with Central Carolina Hospital for over 21 years, been in the EMS service. These guys are my family. Central Carolina Hospital is my family. I have worked for multiple different services, including Harnett County EMS. I've worked as a nurse for First Health, and at this time, I am back at EMS again with Central Carolina Hospital. I do feel that if we allow a different county to come in, or a different entity to come in, that it will be devastating to our citizens. Even though I don't live in this county, I come to this hospital. I bring my children to this hospital, even though I live in Moore County. We, I will, I am one of those that if First Health comes in after 21 years, I'm out. I will leave. I'm not gonna have, I'm not gonna stay just because of the changes. And I really do request that you really look over those proposals. I've read over them, and just make sure that those are, those suggestions, you know, what's going to be perfect for this county? What's going to help our citizens? What's going to give the people who live here the best opportunity for care? That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? Yes, sir. Come forward. And please state your name and address.
Robert McConville, 1704 Lord Ashley Drive, Sanford, North Carolina. I've been a physician at Central Carolina Hospital for over 40 years, and I've worked with EMS that whole time. I guess the first 16 years, I didn't realize it was run by the county, but the last 24 years, it's been run by Central Carolina. I realize there's controversy about the local hospital. There has been ever since I've been here for 40 years. I think the county commissioners brought in Tenet, and then Tenet sold to LifePoint, so there is controversy. It's maybe less than it was before, but I have been very satisfied with the care that my patients have received from Central Carolina EMS. And I know the people that work there. I trust them, and I've worked with them for several years, and I would, I realize Moore County has a lot of resources, and I realize they have EMS around Sanford, but I think that our EMS has been satisfactory, if not excellent, in terms of providing, providing for the care for the community. So I'd like to see us stay with Central Carolina if possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McConville. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? Now that the microphone is sanitized, you wish to speak for or against, please come forward and address the, I need your name and address, please.
My name's Jennifer Beard. I'm a PA at Sand Hills Family Practice, and my address is 1507 Stone Ridge Drive. I was born and raised in Sanford. My maiden name is Van Orden, if you know my parents, because that's sort of how it goes in Sanford. I moved away and went to big school medicine in big cities, and then I ended up going to PA school at Elon University. I knew, growing up in a small town, I wanted to serve people who really needed care, underserved people, and so I was awarded the National Health War Scholarship. I'm not sure if you guys know how prestigious this is, or what it is driven to do, but it's driven to serve underserved people. I spent my first three years out of school practicing in Henderson, North Carolina. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with Henderson, North Carolina, but it is poverty-ridden. There's another Duke LifePoint hospital there called Mariah Param, and I was a witness to see what happens when something like this happens. I was a witness to see that the Lewisburg Hospital got closed down by an episode like this. The Lewisburg Hospital was serving a lot of the people of Lewisburg, and because of contracts like this, shutting down the ER and causing low census in the ER, the entire hospital was closed. That resulted in not just the hospital going under and closing for almost three to five years, but poor care for the localized people. We have to start realizing in Sanford that the hospital is the center of our world here in Sanford. We take care of our people, and without it, there's nothing. If you take away the ER from our local area and the EMS service from our local area, you will see a decrease in health status here. My patients in primary care, 90% of them don't have the means, transportation, and availability to go out of town. They don't want to go out of town. They want their care here. And if you start removing small pieces of the puzzle where people get their care here, or if you affect the hospital, which could close the ER, slow down imaging, decrease all the staffing in general, what's going to happen is, is that people are not going to be able to get care here. They're going to have mistrust in the system, and they are not going to get care at all, which is going to lead to an economic downturn in Sanford overall, social and economic, just not medical. We know that medical stuff can drive our population, and we need to keep our population well. And the way to do that is to keep our EMS with CCH. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else for or against? Seeing that there are no other, last call, for or against? Anyone wish to speak? Seeing that there are no further comments, I wish to close the public hearing. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, for attending. We have no public comments on the agenda. We have to go chase down Amy. Next item on the agenda is old business, the Planning Board Recommendations for a Zoning Map Amendment, rezoning approval. Hi, Amy.
County Commissioners and staff. Whitney, or County Attorney, is handing out an updated page for you guys. Apparently, when I distributed the agenda originally, I didn't include sample motions for you, so you don't have to use those, but I typically provide those to you. So I wanted to include that information for you this evening. Regarding the rezoning request for which the public hearing was held on July 20th, this was a rezoning request for approximately two acres, part of a 42-acre tract of land of NC Highway 87 South. The plan, the request was to rezone from residential restricted to general commercial C2. The Planning Board convened after the public hearing was held and discussed this and made a recommendation by unanimous vote to rezone the property from residential restricted to general commercial C2. The Board briefly discussed the traffic on Highway 87 South. And staff explained that if the subject property is rezoned, it will be recombined into the adjoining parcel and used for the expansion of an existing landscaping supply business. Once again, there are two votes that are required. One is a vote on whether or not the rezoning request is consistent with the adopted long-range land use plan, which is our Plan San Lee. And the second vote is to either approve or deny the rezoning request. I have provided example motions for you, or you're free to make your own motions. Are there any questions?
Any questions of Amy? Any questions of Mr. Van Gross? Do I have a motion to approve the statement on long-range plan consistency as it relates to rezoning request? Motion, which motion option? She gave us three. The one in favor, Amy, which is the best one? I always get this confused, I'm sorry.
Of course.
Is motion number one?
That's probably motion number one.
Okay.
The rezoning request appears to be consistent with the Plan San Lee Long Range Plan designation of mixed-use activity center, which lists general commercial C2 as a proposed zoning district and commercial uses as allowed land uses. Therefore, I make a motion that this request is consistent with the adopted long-range plan. Would that be the motion you are seeking to make, Commissioner Sharp?
Thank you, Commissioner Sharp. Motion's been made to approve the statement on long-range plan consistency as it relates to rezoning request. Motion option number one, it is consistent with the adopted long-range plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And the next one is to either approve or deny the rezoning request on vote number two. Do I have a motion? Motion's been approved to approve the rezoning request. Option one. Therefore, move to approve the request to rezone a vacant two-acre portion of a 42-plus or minus acre vacant tract of land identified in Lee County Tax Parcel 9660-574812-00 from residential restricted to general commercial C2. Any further discussion? Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Better off not giving us too many options.
Next item is new business, approval of the MOU with the Board of Elections.
Yes, I can do that one. So, under the North Carolina General Statutes, the local Board of Elections are empowered to point, remove, and set the compensation of its employees. And as such, many counties and local Board of Elections have entered into memorandums of understanding that govern the human resource policies of those employees. And so we have put together an MOU for the Board's approval. If the Board approves it, then we'll send it to the Board of Elections for their, them to approve as well. It's really just kind of spells out everything that we've already been doing and just memorializes it into an MOU. So the basis is that the Lee County Human Resource Department will help assist in providing personnel assistance without affecting the Board of Elections' authority to appoint, discipline, and removal of employees.
Any questions of Whitney?
I move to approve. I think it's a very good move.
Motion's been made to approve the MOU for the Elections and Board of Commissioners. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by approving the MOU, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the Manager's Report, Preliminary June 2020 Financial Report. I'm sorry. It did mean 2020, didn't it?
You ran much there. That was my mistake.
Oh, it's been a long day. Trust me, it's been a long day.
It obviously has been a long day when I typed that in, too. So I do apologize. This is the Preliminary Financial Report for the month of June 30th, 2021. As usual, I always remind you, the sales tax runs three months behind. But in addition to that, this being the end of the fiscal year for the county, there are other revenues and expenditures related to fiscal year 2021 that will be booked between now and mid-August. So these numbers will change and you'll get your final report as usual in October or November. I can tell you that the deficit that you see there has already been overcome with one-month sales tax and revenues. So at this time, there are no departments exceeding their budgets. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have. We have exceeded our tax budget by 100, we're at 104.72%, so we did exceed our taxes, our income taxes for the year.
Any questions from Mrs. Mentor?
If not, you will see on page 94, the usual sales tax report. This shows you our collections through April of '21. You can see on that report where we stood according to our budget, which in most cases we have already exceeded. And then you'll see where we did our projections during the budget process. And we are on par to meet those projections. I will tell you that we got the numbers for May today. I'll give you the official report, the written report on those next month. But we did receive another $1.6 million in sales tax revenues. So that still puts us in the 20% to 22% growth range over the last fiscal year. And we are at 90-some percent. We are still right on target to make our projections for this fiscal year.
That double-digit number causes me just grimace a little bit.
It does make us, several of us, a little uncomfortable, wondering when the bottom's gonna fall out. But hopefully it won't and stuff, so. But, you know, we tried to adjust our numbers for next year accordingly.
Any questions of Lisa? Just incredible numbers, that's all I can say.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And by the way, congratulations again in the front-page paper and all the recognition and rewards. We're working on a formal recognition for the group. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Just out of curiosity, did you move that?
Yes, we moved the resolution of the MOA with North Carolina Attorneys. We're gonna do it after closed session. And we did add a closed session to the agenda. What I'd like to do now is go into Commissioners' comments. And I'll start with Commissioner Carter.
Thank you. This has been an interesting evening. I appreciate the opportunity to hear from our citizens. I have recently been appointed a trustee at Central Carolina Community College and attended my first meeting the other day. Just a couple of things to mention. First of all, the reception from Commissioner Reeves' letter on basic law enforcement training, et cetera, was very positive. And they're, they're taking it very seriously and plan on staffing it and trying to get an answer back to you. They also discussed the Magnetic Morelli property. And they're at the point right now where they're going to ask for design input. And that is really related to the actual Magnetic Morelli property itself. And they're kind of waiting on the library change and the movement of the Lee Early College, et cetera. I guess the other thing that was apparent, especially from the Chairman, who was reappointed, Chairman Phil Pot, is that he expressed his appreciation, as I think was mentioned many times when I was there, to Lee County for the effort that we've done with this Magnetic Morelli project and the scope of being able to improve the offering of the community college is just, it's really kind of exciting. And it's really, I guess, something like that kind of stirs the juices and people are doing a lot of good work. Anyway, I think we can say we were part of that and that's, that's, that's a good thing to report, I think. That's all I had today.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Connect?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, I was glad to see the turnout for the, talking about the contracts, about First Health and CCH. I think we, as they were all saying, we need to look hard at what best benefits Lee County. And I look forward to hearing more about that. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Reeves?
Yes, over at the Civic Center, which is not one of my favorite places to go to a meeting. The acoustics are bad and I heard several reports from individuals not being able to hear out in the audience. I don't know the solution for that. I'm not in that line of work. But perhaps we either get speakers in the back of the room as well as in the front, so that those in attendance can hear exactly what's being said.
I'll speak with our audiovisual gentleman and see what we can do.
It's always been notorious for acoustics in that facility.
I agree.
And that was after the upgrades. They were supposed to put panels in there to help it, but obviously, it didn't work as well.
Just get some boombox and put them in the back. That'll work.
Anything else, sir?
Nope, thank you.
Thank you for the comment. Commissioner Lovick?
Echo Commissioner Carver and Commissioner Sharps, thank you for the community for coming out. They left preaching early, so to hear them, thank each one of them for coming out, I do think it's a privilege that people should use more to come and exercise their right to come before the ones. I know you guys do and I do, I was gonna tell them this to their face, I take it very seriously, the decision that we have to make in a couple of weeks for our community. With that being said, we have to put our personal feelings aside and I think do the due diligence of the folks that voted us in and do the best decision that we can for the county. That's what we were voted in for. And maybe that's what I intend to do, is put away my personal feelings and do the best option for our taxpayers and citizens of Lee County. Thank you.
Anything else, sir? Thank you. I wish to read a letter, actually, an email that I got last night from Pamela Glover. She addresses Mayor Mann, Dr. Crumpton, and Commissioner Smith. "Good Sunday evening. I hope you are all doing well. I'm reaching out to you after being contacted by citizens since the latter part of June. Also, our chief juvenile court counselor has stressed concerns regarding our youth in Lee County. The concerns are as follows. One, can there be more regulations placed on hotel room rentals? Can the city and county instruct hotel establishments to require that a responsible adult or adults remain on the premises when renting rooms for minors and parties? We all remember the horrible shooting that happened August 10th, 2019, and most recently, June 5th, 2021. Both of these shootings were at a Sanford Hotel and numerous youth were on-site unsupervised. Two, for years, our chief juvenile court counselors have reported that the youth in Lee County involved in the juvenile justice system has more needs and commit your more severe felonies such as murder. Both of the accused shooters in the above-mentioned hotel shootings were 16-years-old. The night of the August 2019 shooting, the Sanford Herald wrote that a 911 caller stated, quote, 'There are young people in the street with big guns,' unquote. I know I only mentioned the hotel shootings, but we also have additional shootings and murders this year involving our youth. Three, why are there still no structured places for our, quote, 'at-risk,' unquote, youth to go, offering them guidance and stability? In Lee County, we are growing by leaps and bounds economically. We have more businesses wanting to break ground here in our county. Therefore, we must make sure that Lee County remains enticing to new businesses, current businesses, and individuals. But we will not be able to accomplish this if we are not able to render solutions to our crime issue, specifically youth crime. I know that some of these surrounding counties have put additional resources in place for their youth. Some of them have structured day programs, youth centers, and programs such as PAL. These programs provide direct services to troubled and at-risk youth. I am a strong believer that if other counties can put programs in place to help their youth, so can Lee County. Our JCPC is state-mandated to address issues related to youth. Therefore, we are willing to discuss these concerns with you and work on some strategies. I thank you for your time, attention, and considerations. Please have a wonderful week. Pamela Glover." I did respond to Pamela today. And my response is as follows. Dear Pamela, I plan on bringing this letter before the Board tonight. In addition, we will entertain a resolution next month to initiate a youth council to start soliciting from our community's young people potential solutions and remedies to our solution, excuse me, to our situation involving youth crime. Unfortunately, adults who refuse or abdicate their parental responsibilities are solely to blame. I'm not sure we can dictate to hotels who and how they let rooms out. I appreciate your concerns and look forward to entertaining solutions. Respectfully, and I signed it. I just wanted to share that with you. We are aware, we know there's a concern. It's a serious concern and we do have every responsibility to take care of dealing with this situation. And there'll be more to follow.
And I wish a part of your response would have been to ask for those programs in other counties that are working so well. You know, when I listen to the local news statewide, all of us are having problems, very similar problems. And rather than to tell me about them, give me factual information to help support the position you're taking on the issue. But lastly, I'm also waiting for somebody to write Mom and Dad and the guardians of these 15, 16-year-olds. You know, government can't do everything for you, but they will build more prisons.
Thank you, sir. I have nothing further. I do want to, well, let me rephrase that. I do want to thank everyone who's left for bringing forth their public concerns regarding the EMS contract and look forward to those returning for the next public hearing. Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna hand this down to Commissioner Lovick, because I don't have my glasses. I can't see.
Oh, I'm sorry. I am so sorry. I, I can relate. You ought to see what I have to read at work.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion per NC General Statute 143-318.11, subsection A3, to consult with our attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege EMS discussion to discuss the matter of Lee County, North Carolina versus Anti-Source Bergen Drug Corp. and National Prescription Opioid Litigation. Also, per North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, subsection A4, to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of business.
A motion has been made to go into closed session. All those in favor, any further discussion, first off? Any further discussion? We have three topics to go into. All those in favor to go into closed session, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you very much. We're gonna go into closed session, ladies and gentlemen.
We're good to go?
Yep.
I lost the commissioner.
Where did, where did Andre go?
Okay, we'll wait. All right, we're at a closed session. I just wanted to apologize publicly to the manager for overseeing or overlooking his report. So if you would be so kind, sir.
Yes, sir. The first thing I want to bring your attention to is the correspondents from UNC Chapel Hill that I have before you, or some of their blog posts, I guess it's what it's mostly. And it's actually an attempt to start getting some discussion moving forward in our coming meetings to discuss how we plan to use our ARP, American Rescue Plan Act funds. And the first, you know, couple pages really tell you what we can and cannot do with the money. The others are just ideas and suggestions. But at the bottom of the first page, it says lost revenue. We do not qualify for using any of the ARC money for lost revenue. As you saw in our financial statements today, our revenue actually went up. So in totality, we had areas where it went down, but in total, it went up. Therefore, we don't qualify for that portion. Item two is necessary water, wastewater and stormwater infrastructure, which obviously, if we wanted to get into those businesses, we could do that. Replenish local government staff. We did not let any staff go, except for, you know, we cut some programs and part-time staff were reduced. But now we are getting back into it and our part-time staff is coming back. So we can't really say that anything, you know, we can use anything to replenish local government staff. Reimbursements is kind of a large area. We're still working to try to figure out what reimbursements are. There's some discussion about how to use the investment proceeds. So once we get our funds and we invest it, the interest that comes back to us, we can use that interest as well to fund any of this stuff and then supplant general revenue expenditures for pandemic purposes. So, you know, anything going forward, as we're starting to see a little resurgence in the pandemic, if we needed to buy supplies or extra, you know, things such as partitions or temperature gauges or anything like that, we could do that. So some other counties, because the funds are restricted to impacts from COVID, you have a couple of counties that were heavily reliant on tourism, who put grants out there to hotels, restaurants, bars, anything that's related to the tourism industry to replenish that money because there's a direct correlation between COVID and their loss of business due to tourism and the lack of travel. We did similar grants for nonprofits and businesses with the CARES Act funding and businesses that were adversely affected. So we have a process in place where we wanted to figure out, you know, nonprofit money that's clear, any nonprofit that showed that they are having impacts from COVID or ongoing impacts, we could fund grants to them as well. It's a little bit different. They have to sign a contract that's going to be worded a little bit differently than the CARES Act and have to guarantee that the monies will be used for COVID-related expenditures. So those are just some discussions. I'm still researching other counties to see what they have coming forward with proposals. And, you know, this is one of those things that getting out ahead, there was an issue tonight that was discussed about if we were to get into the, you know, the eviction avoidance business, that is an acceptable expenditure with the, with the ARC funds. How we would set up that program would be a little different than what we did before because obviously we would want to make sure that those payments go to the landlord so that we know that that money is being used to pay the rent or the mortgage. So some discussions and as we're going forward in, in August and September, we probably should start thinking about this and listening to the commissioners, what issues they would like to address. And the chairman and I will be meeting with the city to discuss what some of their ideas are because they're doing the same thing tomorrow night, kind of introducing these types of things to their board. Which brings me to the next issue that I need to discuss. I'm sorry that our health director needed to leave, but he reported this morning that there were 65 new cases of COVID-19. The county is at 14 employees who are either tested positive or at home because of contact tracing. The health director is recommending that when we're indoors, that we go back to wearing masks and remind people about washing hands and using hand sanitizer. We have a boatload of hand sanitizer that we're getting to put back out so that the public and our employees will have access to it. As you saw in our financial statements today, our revenue actually went up. So in totality, we had areas where it went down, but in total, it went up. Therefore, we don't qualify for that portion. Item two is necessary water, wastewater and stormwater infrastructure, which obviously, if we wanted to get into those businesses, we could do that. Replenish local government staff. We did not let any staff go, except for, you know, we cut some programs and part-time staff were reduced. But now we are getting back into it and our part-time staff is coming back. So we can't really say that anything, you know, we can use anything to replenish local government staff. Reimbursements is kind of a large area. We're still working to try to figure out what reimbursements are. There's some discussion about how to use the investment proceeds. So once we get our funds and we invest it, the interest that comes back to us, we can use that interest as well to fund any of this stuff and then supplant general revenue expenditures for pandemic purposes. So, you know, anything going forward as we're starting to see a little resurgence in the pandemic, if we needed to buy supplies or extra, you know, things such as partitions or temperature gauges or anything like that, we could do that. So some other counties, because the funds are restricted to impacts from COVID, you have a couple of counties that were heavily reliant on tourism, who put grants out there to hotels, restaurants, bars, anything that's related to the tourism industry to replenish that money because there's a direct correlation between COVID and their loss of business due to tourism and the lack of travel. We did similar grants for nonprofits and businesses with the CARES Act funding and businesses that were adversely affected. So we have a process in place where we wanted to figure out, you know, nonprofit money that's clear, any nonprofit that showed that they are having impacts from COVID or ongoing impacts, we could fund grants to them as well. It's a little bit different. They have to sign a contract that's going to be worded a little bit differently than the CARES Act and have to guarantee that the monies will be used for COVID-related expenditures. So those are just some discussions. I'm still researching other counties to see what they have coming forward with proposals. And, you know, this is one of those things that getting out ahead, there was an issue tonight that was discussed about if we were to get into the, you know, the eviction avoidance business, that is an acceptable expenditure with the, with the ARC funds. How we would set up that program would be a little different than what we did before because obviously we would want to make sure that those payments go to the landlord so that we know that that money is being used to pay the rent or the mortgage. So some discussions and as we're going forward in, in August and September, we probably should start thinking about this and listening to the commissioners, what issues they would like to address. And the chairman and I will be meeting with the city to discuss what some of their ideas are because they're doing the same thing tomorrow night, kind of introducing these types of things to their board. Which brings me to the next issue that I need to discuss. Sorry that our health director needed to leave, but he reported this morning that there were 65 new cases of COVID-19. The county is at 14 employees who are either tested positive or at home because of contact tracing. The health director is recommending that when we're indoors, that we go back to wearing masks and remind people about washing hands and using hand sanitizer. We have a boatload of hand sanitizer that we're getting to put back out so that the public and our employees will have access to it. And then where possible, use, you know, we should still be social distancing, is his recommendation. But he's, that's just in county buildings. We're not making any recommendations to do anything anywhere else. At some point, the board may need to take action to kind of get these things moving. But that would be up to the board as to whether we want to require the staff to start wearing masks and social distance and do that kind of stuff because we don't have a state of emergency in place anymore. So the powers that I had under that state of emergency, I don't have anymore. So I can't make employees wear masks. I can't do that type of thing, but the health director can. Health director can make his staff wear masks because they're in a clinical environment. And we could require that anybody going into the government center, since the air is circulated through all four floors, that they would have to wear a mask as well. So some things to think about between now and the 16th. And hopefully, the numbers will start trending the other way instead of where they're trending right now, which are not very good.
Got two quick questions.
Mm-hmm.
What is the dollar amount for the ARP?
We're getting $11 million, $980,000, almost $12 million. And the city's getting right at $8 million. So between the two of us, we have $20 million.
Second question, can you get me some cheaper water down at Carolina Trace?
I'd love to get you some cheaper water at Carolina Trace, but, you know, there's, it has a complicated issue.
Yeah, I understand that.
Let me ask you a question about affordable housing.
Yes, sir.
I know there's a lot of motivation in the ARPA talk from a federal level to use some of the funds for that and that, that money is being, a lot of it is being passed to the state evidently rather than just the county. Is that, are we allowed to consider affordable housing initiatives using our money?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can we complement that or leverage it by using some state money to go with the stuff that we spend?
Yeah, the state is providing lots of different grants and it's actually pretty, you know, and they need to pass a budget first. But when that, if they pass their budget, not only will there be grants for affordable housing, but they're offering additional grants for water, sewer, broadband, that wasn't on here, but broadband is also allowed, broadband infrastructure. And we finally have some interest from Windstream and Spectrum on partnering with us to try to expand broadband into some of the rural areas of the county. So, but yes, sir, you know, there's, there's a way to leverage state money with the local money and we're still, we're all still learning how to do that.
Yeah.
One more thing. You know, the idea has been floated out about the sewer and water business.
Mm-hmm.
And is 11 or 12 million dollars enough to do that? I mean, if that was something, you know, we wanted.
It's enough to get us started. They, the county, I think you have to remember, we're still a rural county. There are a lot of funds out there through the USDA, rural development.
Additional things that could be.
Yes, that we can go get additional grants through the state, through the feds, and additional loans from the USDA if we need to get back into it. But as I tell people, you have to have customers. We don't need customers. So we have to figure that out. You know, we have talked with Harnett County about, they need help with economic development and they want to talk to us about economic development and how we've been winning. The, there are more and more counties doing regional type economic development projects with other counties where they share the revenue. The biggest one is north of Raleigh. There are four counties that share revenue from industrial wins. They market themselves as Raleigh North. And so anyway, there's lots of things to discuss and lots of things to look into. Commissioner Sharp and, and if we really want to get in the water and sewer business, we probably should hire someone who knows a lot more about it than me and have them do a study and see, see if it's worth our while to get into it and we can use this money to do that study.
Thank you. Mentioning the eviction thing, I'm not so much concerned about the people who might be put out of their houses. That's important, that may be misunderstood. But I'm concerned about getting the landlords paid because that also fixes the problem. But the moratorium went away on the 31st, right?
Yeah.
So the question is, there's a sense of urgency because once an action is taken to put somebody on the street, there's not a lot of incentive for that person to go seek those funds to pay their landlord back. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, they already realize, they think they're getting thrown out anyway.
That's right.
There's no way to stop the process even though it is.
Is there a way for us to make some sort of decision in the near term about whether or not we're going to get involved in trying to help with that or not?
I asked the manager this morning on what the numbers were and he let me know that he checked with the clerk of courts and she said, come on down and count them for us, we don't have enough people to count.
Yeah, the trouble is, the nuance is that we are out to help people who in fact have a problem associated with COVID, not everybody who just decided not to pay their rent because they could. And there are people around who, there are people right now, Brick Capital for one, who are in the process of trying to identify those people that might be helped. But again, the idea is we have landlords out there who haven't gotten rent for a year.
Yeah, they have mortgages too in many cases.
That's right, that's right. So they're kind of a small business that needs some help. So that makes sense. And of course, it helps not to have people and the homeless roles also. But again, I think the timing is kind of urgent.
Is urgent. So I will see if I can put something together in two weeks. Not guaranteeing anything, but I can, I can get with some other counties that already are doing it. Durham, you know, Buncombe, I think they're in it. So we can find out from them how they're doing it. Obviously, there's an application process and a certification to make sure those people, you know, are indeed being impacted from the COVID and don't have something else going on where they're just not paying the rent.
Without necessarily hanging the albatross around county staff's neck to make these determinations, finding the assets that can in fact make these decisions as commissioner.
Well, I know that Brick Capital is interested in that and he probably called Caring as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. That's.
Any other questions of the manager? Mark?
Yes, sir, I'm good.
Everybody's good. All right, next item on the agenda is the approval of resolution and MOA with the North Carolina Attorney General's Office in reference to the opioid litigation settlement. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion's been made to approve the resolution MOA with the North Carolina Attorney General's Office in reference to opioid litigation settlement. Any comments, any questions? Is he in none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. And I will entertain a motion. Yes. Oh, yes, please.
Glad to introduce Haley Hall is our new communications specialist. Haley comes to us from the Board of Education.
Could you take your mask off briefly, sorry everybody?
So she has, she has experience doing this type of job. And we are so glad to have her. She's from Minnesota and Dr. Connect, she's a hockey fan. So you got a Sabres fan, a Hurricanes fan and a Wild fan. So, you know, we've got, we got, getting the hockey teams covered, so welcome and we're glad to have you.
I'll be visiting your home state here in a couple days.
Oh, really? I just came back from there. It was pretty nice weather compared to here.
Careful now. Okay, thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion's been made to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Drive safely where you see both no speeding.